I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Can we do a roll call, children?
President Mary Fellows?
Here.
Member Jimmy Hart?
Here.
Remember Dr. Oggy?
Good morning.
We have a quorum.
Okay. The reports, we'll go with the director's report first. Stephanie?
Good morning. Good morning, everybody, again.
Good morning.
So, I will share my report. Your part I want to share with you is is a kind of summary of what happened at the Board of Supervisors meeting Tuesday and the next steps process that we discussed with the staff yesterday. I had it up. If I were prepared, I would share it, but I don't know where it is right now, so I'll just talk about it. The next steps, the transition plan, I think everybody heard the Board of Supervisors meeting that Rhonda spoke on. So it's about the 37 remaining students.
I'm not sure everybody heard. Could we go over those five steps just for the record?
I'm going to pull it up.
Okay.
One second.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I apologize. Do you remember that?
Technology is great until it's not.
Well, especially when you're not prepared. It's on my screen somewhere, maybe.
Maybe Rhonda has it. Rhonda, you read them. Do you have them?
Oh, I have it because it's, I added to it yesterday based on the meeting with the staff, so.
Okay.
Give me
Got it.
A few minutes. I'm gonna scan it to myself real quick. I don't know where it's at. Will we talk about something else? Do I scan this or no?
We could. How long will it take?
Just a few seconds, but I don't want to hold anybody up.
Okay, so I was not able to attend the meeting yesterday. I really wanted to be there. I know it's your usual staff meeting, but it's my understanding that Dan Sullivan was there as well. Was there a particular reason for that, just to, as a representative of the department, or was there another reason he was there?
So, Mary.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I can hear you the whole time, Madam President. I can hear you the whole time, Aunt Dana. Oh, okay, all right.
So, can you guys see my screen?
It's pretty small, but yeah, we can see it.
So, Mary, you're asking about the staff meeting yesterday. So yesterday was a regular staff meeting. We have staff meetings every Wednesday. At those staff meetings, we just talk about either students, any issues, and any program updates. And so, the meeting yesterday, regular Wednesday meeting, I thought it would be in the directors, the management team, that we would come just to address any issues or concerns that may, they may have questions. They were there to answer questions from the board meeting on that Tuesday. So that's why they were there, just a regular staff meeting. So these were the steps.
Can you send the board members a copy of this
Yes.
transition plan for me? Thank you.
I'll clean it up. Not this one, but I'll clean it up and send it. A little cleaner, I'll send it to you. So these are the steps that Rhonda mentioned at the board meeting on Tuesday. So, at the beginning of session five, we enrolled five new students. All five new students that were enrolled were giving, was given the current status of the school. And all five students chose to enroll, so that was great. So a total, as of yesterday, or at the meeting, there was, we have currently and today, 37 students enrolled in the program. So we have a transition team that we put together. Normally it's the youth specialist specialists, Joel and Albert, their normal job, along with myself, and then Gretel. So we are going to be meeting with the students and parents, you know, if they're under 18, to explain the status of the school and then the transition process. And some of this information's changed from our meeting yesterday, but I'll go on to the next steps. You'll see later in this report. So PVHS team will meet with each student and guardian to talk about, you know, review their transcripts and just talk about, you know, their options, where they are with their credits. PVHS team will review at least three or more schools with the students, you know, that are in their area, where they live. We talked yesterday about not only, you know, giving them these options. Options, we're going to be bringing the schools to them. We're planning a school fair. We're gonna have a job, like a job fair, but a school fair, so that it's gonna be held in the evening, so we can invite parents and students to come. So there's options for students, so they can go around and talk to the schools, you know, get more information about the schools and even possible register at that event. That event has not been scheduled yet. We just talked about it yesterday. We're going to be doing some career school events, inviting some schools out to the campuses, you know, at the INO location and maybe at the Irvington location. And we are going to be even doing some tours with some of the students, you know, taking them out to some of the schools that they may be interested in, you know, doing some tours there. So that's that. So once the schools are, the student have selected the school, you know, the student and parent, you know, PVHS team will provide the complete transfer packet, so that packet, so that student can take that packet to, you know, the school that they choose. So it won't be any work for them. It will prepare and have everything ready for them. So out of the 37 remaining students, this was on Tuesday, we had seven possible graduates, but as we met yesterday and our team, we identified we may have more. And that's here. So if, depending on the options, we're not sure of the status of the ADE process, you know, we don't, we're not sure yet, but this is just an outline to say if, if we have until April 30th, we have two students that are ready to graduate. We had a June, so but as of yesterday, we've learned, we're planning on a June graduation. And so we have about possibly nine graduates for the June graduates. That's what we're planning for June graduation. If the students, you know, do what they need to do to, until now, until June, to catch up on the credits or earn the credits that they need for graduation. We also talked yesterday about, you know, next steps. So yesterday, we met with the teachers and the staff, just discussed the outcomes of the meeting yesterday. We discussed the next steps of the transition plan. We discussed on Monday, so this week is spring break, so on Monday, the students will be back. We're going to have an assembly on that afternoon, just talk about the outcomes of the board meeting. We're gonna talk about, you know, the next steps for the transition plan. We're also gonna be sending out a letter. It's gonna go out today with, once it's approved by management, to the parents, just letting them know, you know, the outcomes, and then our plan, the transition plan. That's gonna go out today. It's gonna go out in Tyler. We also talked about contacting all the students, the 37 remaining students, the staff there today. We're going to, they're going to split up the names, just let them know, to call the students, to assure them that classes are ready to go and still moving forward as of Monday, so that they can show up to school on Monday. Things are moving forward. So they're gonna be making calls today, letters going out today, and an assembly on Monday. We're also going to be, staff's going to be making contact with the graduates, the nine identified graduates, as possible.
Sorry to interrupt, Daphne. There's some concern for FERPA violations. Will you not share this part of the screen? Thank you.
So for the, for the students that are, have possible graduates, they will be meeting with those students directly to make sure they're on target to graduate and working out a graduation plan for each one of them. Because there's a graduation letter that should be going out, so the students know exactly what they need for for graduation. So the point, the youth specialist team, which consists of Joel and Albert, will be handling that part of the the process. So that's pretty much it.
So is that the five steps done that we're talking about?
These? Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm sure there's more into it, but these are the basic thought steps that we're going to take. I'm sure there's gonna be more. As we met yesterday, there's a lot of other things that we need to do, but these are, these are the main goals, to make sure that the students that can graduate by June are on track to graduate and graduate, and that the students that will be transferring out, you know, we have a plan and have options for these young people that we can bring to them, so that, you know, one, that they know that they have options and that they, we do all the work, so they don't have to do any work. We're gonna do all the legwork for them. Albert has already started contacting, as of yesterday, schools, already calling the school, PVHS, to say that they're interested, so we will be inviting these different schools out to the center to, you know, provide more information, just to see what their schools are about, and just to get more information for the students and the families.
Okay, can I just quickly stop you there for a second? I heard Rex Scott say at the board meeting that he would like a copy of the plan. If you could send us, the board, a copy of the plan that you're sending to the Board of Supervisors, would that be possible, please?
So I will be providing weekly reports to my direct management, Rhonda, and then that, from there, she, I have to provide her weekly reports, and then she provides those reports to, so.
President, President Fellows, this is Rhonda. So we, we're, yeah, we noted Supervisor Scott's request to have those updated, updated reports, and so we have a protocol. When we do those reports, we send them up to, through county admin, and then they are given to the Board of Supervisors, and so, and once we create those, you will have, as the board, PVHS board, you will receive a copy of those as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Another question, who is actually vetting the schools? Because I know that our students are used to a particular method of learning. Are we gonna assure that most of those schools that are interested in taking our students, are we gonna make sure that those schools have a similar method of instruction? As opposed to, say, online instruction or something like that?
Well, we are going, like I said, Joel and Albert, Joel has been experienced in this process. He's been at the school 20 plus years. He knows. And Albert's well experienced in the process, so they will be vetting the schools, but we're going to have all school options there. You know, you know, and it's gonna be up to the parent and the students, right, where they want to go, but we're going to have the options. There's not gonna be just one set job, school fair. Throughout this process, hopefully throughout the week, we're gonna have different schools there going on different tours, so the students know, you know, there's options. And wherever they decide, wherever the parent thinks is best fit for them, or the student, and that's, and what they choose, that's what they'll, we'll go with.
Okay. It would be really nice if we could transfer as many students as were interested to the same school, simply because of the community that they've been accustomed to. So any schools that could take on that many students, it would be good to have them all go as a group. And I know it is a parent choice, absolutely, and the transportation is always an issue, but maybe we could keep that in mind, that these students have befriended each other, and that's their support system, and to transfer them with their support system would be a good thing for us to do.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, did you have anything else for your report, Daphne? I'm sorry to have interrupted that.
No, you're fine. That's it. That's all I had.
Okay. With respect to that meeting, the reason I asked about Dan showing up is, my understanding is that there was some mention of the Hatch Act to the employees. And I understand that campaigning for elected officials is not allowed on public time, but I would like some clarification, either from Human Resources or from the county attorney as to that time that those teachers spent in speaking up for their students to the board. So rather than just offhandedly mentioning that, could we get some clarification, official clarification from HR or from the county attorney with respect to whether those teachers have to take paid time off for that period of time? Rhonda, can you reduce that?
Yeah. Yes, President Fellows, I will check into this item that you're asking with both Human Resources and the County Attorney's Office. Once again, we want to make sure that we're getting the right information to the board, and also to find out through Human Resources if individuals have regularly scheduled time to be right in their role and their position. We need to make sure that that, you know, is, or was satisfied and approved to be able to leave that role, right, to be able to go and do something during their rarely scheduled, rarely scheduled time.
Okay.
But certainly, but certainly we'll check into that for you. Thank you.
I'd appreciate that. At least give the staff some official direction as to that. I know the Hatch Act was specifically addressing political campaigning and elections, but I know that local can be involved, but I also know that in some cases, educational institutions are exempted. And I know there's always asterisks associated with that, so some official documentation would be helpful for the staff, the staff.
And President Fellows, as soon as, since we're looking at a couple of different areas, as soon as we can get that information, then that will be shared.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll go on to the financial report. Ann Ortiz, please.
Thank you, Mary. Let's see, I'm gonna pull up our cash balances. And in it, if you'd like, Mary, I can talk a little bit to the cash balances as it relates to closing the school, or if that's a later agenda item. We can wait and cover it there. So we have at the top our grant units, which are on a reimbursement basis, so they're often in a flux state of either negative or positive balances. Traditionally, they should just have a negative balance, but most of our payroll posting of the signatures and finalization is off. So right now, they have several positive cash balances, but they will zero out once everything posts in period nine. Normally, they're about lagging about a month, so they're all pretty much on track, minus that issue. Then on the bottom half, in Fund 2114, we have Classroom Site and Instructional Improvement, which are restricted pots of money, and then, of course, the tax credit cash, but also restricted pot of money and state equalization, more unrestricted. 3623 is also one of our units up in the grant. I should point that one out separately. It's up in the Grant Fund 2042. That was a private grant. It was run through the grant units just because of its nature of being a grant, but it's not from the state. It's from a private donor's foundation. And so we, speaking about what's to come with funds, that one is not on a reimbursement basis and probably needs to be readdressed with the donor for returning the funds, or finding out what they'd like to have done with the funds. Then Classroom Site is restricted. There will be direction from the state likely to return whatever balances are left in Classroom Site. Instructional Improvement, we just recently posted the Journal on T related to Edmentum, so it's zeroed out. It should stay that way. There's normally a July payment of instructional improvement. I don't know that we'll receive it. I think it just depends on the timing of things. Sometimes they advance that payment into June, so if we don't receive it, then that's perfect and simple, and if we do, we'll just return it. On the topic of Classroom Site, and towards the future three months, four or five months, as we're closing out the fiscal year, one of my thoughts was towards the current staff, and normally we process performance pay in the following fall. And it, it would seem, if that's something that the board is interested in pursuing to recognize this year's staff with the Classroom Site monies, that that process would need to be started here in the spring to close it out in the fiscal year with the Classroom Site funds. And then the state equalization money, obviously the largest source of funds, unrestricted funds for educational purposes. We'll have to talk more closely with ADE about their guidance and direction on that. In the couple of schools that I've worked with on closures, they typically have not had substantial cash left at the end of their their operations, so it's normally just been closing out payrolls and things like that. And they've been nonprofits, so they've had to run a little bit longer to finish up financial statements and tax returns and things like that, and really timed out their spending to zero things out. So this is definitely a different closure than most, to have that kind of cash on hand at a closure, so we'll just take ADE's guidance on what needs to happen with those funds. So that's our cash balances. Task orders are not really so relevant at the moment and not causing us too much stress. There are a few things here or there. I asked about refrigeration, but most of the other things are normal trash pickup and things like that, and pest control. So nothing major happening at either site for task orders. And then in our board report, we have, you know, just looking overall at budgets and variances, all the revenue is pretty much on track, right where it should be. The equalization, of course, is fixed on our 100th day, so no matter what happens in the next, you know, three months of school operations, we will continue to receive our equalization payments as things wind down. We will have our last equalization payment on June 22nd for this fiscal year, so those will keep rolling right up until the end. There's not a lot charging to the county allocation right now. Each pay period, there's a small amount of Joel's salary that's been charged to there, and then other than that, just our normal rent and IT, and I think utilities on TEP. Then our our Classroom Site money is currently running on time, so we'll keep receiving that as well through the end of June. And then federal monies, the only two grants, like there were, I guess, three grants were primarily drawing down right now, are, S R 3, the School Improvement Grant and the IDA Grant. Now, I think we should talk about what we want to do with those allocations and how we use them over the next three months, even, even longer, depending on what's happening. If there's staff that are staying at the school past June to close operations, to address students starting their next school year, you know, that's in the direction of the board and CWD Department Leadership, but often there's things needed past June 30. And there, of course, will be things happening with the finances through the encumbrance period, and probably into next fiscal year, as we close out bills. And then, of course, spending is all pretty much under budget, just with the staffing, et cetera, and the smaller student load, so things are running really balanced with just a $5,000 profit at that point, essentially, and $13,000 of federal revenue that had not yet been received. Special education's running a little bit over. That's just a larger load of students this year and a higher cost for those operations. The overall cash at the end of period eight, February, was 648,000, which we just looked at. 79,000 of that is in Classroom Site. Small variance to the cash report, which is normally just related to those historical edit timings, and then unrestricted cash of 568 with a small variance to the, the cash balance report. 118 days of cash on hand. And forecast-wise, of course, there's capacity for all the costs that we have. Special education would be slightly over budget. We are still required to revise the state budget for this fiscal year because our enrollment came in under the budgeted enrollment, the adopted enrollment, so despite closing operations, we will need to revise the budget by May 15th. So on the April agenda, it would make sense to have a budget revision. Aside from that, in the lands of finances, I think it makes a lot of sense to reach out and speak with Linda Chapman and Sarah Barnes, the ADE, just about the School Improvement Grant, to make sure there's nothing they would like to see closed out on that as the school closes. And the entitlement grants, IDA Title I, Title IV, that's pretty standard, just not anything we need to do there. We can continue to using the grants to their capacity up until the end of the school. Any, any questions on those items or something else you'd like me to share on?
Ann, I, Ann, it's Rhonda.
Yeah.
I have a question regarding some of these items, and this is gonna be a very fluid process with a lot of moving parts, and so I would ask that if you could, please summarize this meeting and the items that we need to do, and I would ask that it be done in order of priority and date. You know, i.e. we have a budget revision that's due May 15th. I would ask that we have a summary of that, and the reason I'm asking that is because our finance team, obviously, you know, here in Pima County, needs to be aware and proactive to figure out things on the finance side. And so I think if we're in communication, and you being a subject matter expert at, you know, dealing with these financials as well, it helps us to be able to minimize any issues that we would have when it comes to timelines and just making sure that we're doing, doing things right. And I will be, and I will be getting in contact as well with, with Linda, the ADE side, and then we'll also be working with the Charter, Arizona State Board, Charter Schools as well.
One of the interesting things is what happens with the, the school level financial statements and the annual financial report, which don't happen until September and October. And then the audit and the single audit, which of course for the county doesn't happen until, you know, next January, February, and March. There's a lot of things that could still happen for the school, essentially, over the next year.
And that's understandable, and that's why I think it's good for us to, you know, from your vantage point, lay out a summary once again, so that everybody's on the same page, the same timeline, so that some of, so these things don't slip through the cracks, and we're doing everything that we need to, based on what we know needs to get done. And I'm sure that the the Pima County Finance Side would definitely appreciate, you know, having that information as well. I know we would, so if you could do that sooner rather than later, that would be, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Ann, this is Mary, and I am wondering if the next meeting-
Anne, um, this is Mary, and I am wondering if the next meeting that we have, we couldn't go over the financial, the individual pieces a little more in depth in terms of discussion of what what the possibility of of where they might end up, those pieces, and what we need to do specifically um as part of the board to make sure that those things happen.
Um, yes.
So um Jimmy, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, uh, thanks for the information, Anne. I do have a question about is it the 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 three oh one funds that you mentioned? Can you talk a little bit more to that um just in terms of what we can do with those funds? Um, I I did like the suggestion that you put out there. Uh, but I just want to uh give more insight and just make sure, you know, we're doing things uh within within the guidelines and framework of what we can do.
Sure. So overall, um, classroom site formerly known as Prop three oh one, which is the proposition that authorized the tax to allow um those monies. You know, it's tied up in a statute that's restricted to spending on um. It used to be historically on what we call three buckets or three pots of monies, which were class um classroom teacher base salary increases. Performance bonuses, uh, performance pay is how it was called. And then what they called the menu, which was a range of options, which could include teacher salary increases. Again, it could include um. Oh, it's uh class size reduction was the other major. It now includes a few other things, including like CPR training for CPR costs, college um exam fees, um. And there's a couple of things. Um, maybe two years ago, the state legislature modified it so that it's now actually one some pot of monies that cha- that boards can change those splits of funds. So they used to come in uh twenty percent to base salary, forty percent to performance pay and forty percent to menu. Now it's just one pot of funds that can be used by the board similarly to how it was defined before. But they also broadened it to include counselors and people supporting a student essentially staying in school. Uh, moving it beyond just just use for teachers. And there was a lot of legal over that, over the life of Prop three oh one in classroom site. So the challenge um that is unique to P V H S, uh, that has kind of, it's it's for the bulk of time, it has been used very efficiently. We've done base salary increases. The um, the menu pot of funds was used towards Joel's. Part of Joel's salary is a dropout prevention specialist, youth specialist. And then the forty percent was always used diligently each subsequent fall on the teacher performance pace. And it maintained a minimal balance somewhere around thirty thousand dollars, which was the performance money roll accumulating and rolling into the next year that would then be paid out. So then what's happened over the last three years, I'd say during the pandemic and then beyond, was staff turnover is that there has not been the group of staff to then pay out the performance monies too. So over the past two to three cycles, only one or two individuals have been left to receive the performance monies. And thus, you know, thirty thousand dollars of performance accumulated and only, say, six or twelve is paying out. And that's what's led to the cash balance. Now, it's not tied up in only using it for performance at this point. It can be used across that whole range. However, under the counties like payroll structure and payment system, we don't have a lot of flexibility in just deciding, okay, um, we can give a ten thousand dollar increase to someone as a retention or a performance or a base salary increase. We have to stick within the the framework of the county um salary system. And even doing the performance pay bonuses requires a lot to get approval and the memos and um sign offs across the levels at C W D and the county overall. So even just paying out the performances is a challenge. And there's kind of a ceiling to that. So I worked in with other schools who've had closures and and they haven't had nearly as much classroom site money. But they will give a much more significant classroom site bonus at the end of the year to clear out that cash. Because otherwise, it does just need to be reverted to the state because it has those specific uses. And if we can't use it that way, it needs to go back into the pot of monies to be used that way. And um I don't, with that much, with eighty thousand dollars and only two salary staff. Well, I mean, we've never included the youth specialist before in the performance pay. But so with only two salary teachers, right? Jason and V, um, because uh Joe Casey is um and and Laska are both uh contracted essentially. I mean, the the board could choose to modify the way the per- their performance payment um system is to allow it to others. But I'm not sure how you would would do that with Laska, etc., etc. But so I I I don't see us able to use a hu- a huge portion of those funds um given just the there's restrictions in the county payroll and salary system. And that, you know, that is what it is. I think I definitely recommend pushing forward on the performance pays for this year. Um, going through the cycle and the teachers doing the the report of their efforts so that uh it's ready to go in June.
And I have a question. I have a question. And what what would we need to do or what would need to happen to see if the youth specialist qualifies? So Joel and Albert.
So that's really just the plan itself. Um, it's not, it's not the county, it's not the state. It's an internally developed performance pay plan uh that historically they weren't eligible. And so it just hadn't been updated and there hadn't been a focus yet on updating it to include them. But they could be. And so right now, the performance pay asks for very specific teaching focused pieces. And so it would just need to be broadened. Now, having said that, it has to go through a board approval. So ti- you know, we have to be very timely in modifying that plan. And before it goes for board approval, it needs to be approved by seventy percent of the eligible participants. So we'd need to fast track modifying the plan. Um, have the eligible individuals vote on it to make sure there was seventy percent approval. Then bring it to a board meeting for the board to approve it. This board membership of um Mary, Jimmy, and uh Dr. Algean. And then uh, once those steps are done, then you could pay them because they are in the eligible bucket of, you know, positions now as counselors. So it's definitely a doable piece.
And Anne, uh, what about um, the legality of including the contracted staff? Is that not? Uh, would that also be a board action or is that something um that's just totally not allowed, period?
So typically, the easier way to do that um is to it it doesn't help with spending those money, um, but there are plenty of schools that then just use state aid for that. So they include them in the ability to receive that. And in fact, many do it across like, you know, all the registrar and lots of other people who are involved in making sure the students are um successful in being in the classroom. But they choose to pay them out of the state equalization money to not cross any gray lines with using classroom site. And and same for contractors. Um. It's definitely something we can look at more on the statute. I don't know that the statutes, but the statute hasn't specified in the past contractors, and I would want to read it again, that that they were not eligible. It didn't specify it had to be employees. It was people in those positions. So as long as that's the case, we're allowed to charge purchase service to classroom site. Uh, and, you know, in the case of, say, Joe Casey, who's clearly in a teacher position already. And again, it would just mean modifying the performance plan to include individuals in those positions.
Jimmy, recognize you.
Last question. Um, realizing those funds will just go back to the state. Um, could the funds be used for some sort of professional development or skill enhancement? Um, given schools are going to be closing, folks are going to be needing new new positions. There's lots of uh learning opportunities as conferences that come up uh through June, you know, before the June thirtieth fiscal year. Is is that an option?
I believe it is an option in uh um in the menu group of funds. So I think that that that's possible.
Um, yeah, I I just, I would like to see the entire. I would like to see the entire staff uh receive something simply because of the the extra duties they've provided, uh, um, you know, just the push to get these students um quickly, uh, units as quickly as possible. It's been a group effort. Um, and uh, I'd like to at least recognize that somehow. So if, and Ms. Pena, if you can um follow up with that uh to help us find out if that's something we can do either legally or um state e- equal with state equalization, we would like to do that. I would like to do that, and I would like to know what the possibility of doing that is, the legality.
Yeah, President Fellows, that will be um one of the many items that we will follow up on and report back on. And that that speak that goes back to uh, the request that I had of Anne to provide a summary and list, right, all the things we need to work on and timelines of, you know, the of what each item, you know, requires, I guess, as a as a as a way to say it. So if if I could get that, and then we will start working on those items. Um, because we have a lot of moving parts, like I said, and we just want to make sure that we're doing everything that we should on a timely basis. So thank you. Yep, will do.
And Ms. Connor, um, could you go back to the staff and ask them to take a look at that uh pay performance pay plan? And perhaps put together something that includes um all uh all the staff and then also something that includes only those that are employed by this the county. Um, be whatever position they're in. Um, I'd like to have the board be able to look at a copy of both of those. Um, and um have them pre-approved by the staff so that if we decide to take action on it in the April meeting, we can do that. And if not, we can call a s- a special meeting to do that. I'm sure the board would not have a problem with that.
Will do.
Thank you very much. Um. Thank you, Anne, for everything, um, for keeping us on track.
Mm-hmm.
And um particularly in the last few months. I know you've been used and abused, so thank you. Um, okay. Any other further concerns, questions for Anne at this time? Okay, then we'll move on to number five, action item. Request approval of minutes from the board meeting held on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. I did table this at one point, um, Jimmy, because you were not here. Um, Michael and I decided to wait, but I'm willing to go forward. I don't know if you've had a chance to read those minutes, Chula.
I did want to request to add quorum established on both of those sets of minutes.
Oh, okay.
So and that's just at that first part. I wanted to make sure I brought that up, if that was okay for me to add. But I have both documents up if y'all have any other changes to make.
Um, I do. I have on the minutes from January eighteenth, item number sixteen. Um, apparently they heard November, but it's December that I um was addressing, the December seventh memo. Got it? And then um on the last uh called the public, um, I heard, I saw that it says told verbally. Um, we're told they could enroll, but then that they could not enroll. So um they were told they could enroll when they dr- when they dropped out, but then they were not allowed to enroll when they came back. So I would like it to say that, and I can send you that if you want me to.
Would you please send me that?
I will do that.
Thank you. We also have a a question. I think that question will have to wait until the call to the audience, Jessica, but it's noted. Anything else from the board for edits to the minutes from January eighteenth?
Well, I'm gonna put off, put that off until April, and then I'll send you the change and we'll readdress it. Jimmy, did you have any uh questions or concerns about those minutes?
No questions.
Okay. So I will table that. So I'm sorry, until the next meeting. Um. And we'll move on to action item six, request approval of minutes from the board meeting held on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. I don't have any comments or questions. Um, Jimmy, did you have a chance to read those?
No questions.
Okay. Um, and Michael did not express any uh concerns. So I'm going to go ahead and motion that those minutes be um accepted into the record for February fifteenth. Pima Vocational High School Governing Board. Do you have a second, Jimmy?
Yes, second.
Okay. All those in favor? I two I's and no names. So that's approved. Item number seven, moving on, discussion items regarding the Board of Supervised Decision. Established Plan for Student Transition to Other Schools. We've obviously covered that, Ms. Connor. And um Ms. Pena will be providing uh the board a copy of uh those five steps and whatever's provided to the Board of Supervisors regarding that. Thank you. Um, any other questions or concerns, Jimmy, with respect to that?
None, thank you.
Five A or six A, excuse, seven A.
Zero.
I really need to go back and do my Roman numerals again. Um, seven B, Plan for Financial Dissolution. I think we'll cover that um next board meeting. And I appreciate your feeling willing to go over that. Um, mostly just the pots of money or the things that we need to be concerned about with respect to closure. Um, so I'm expecting that'll be uh at least a two hour meeting, if not longer. Um. Seven C, Board Dissolution. Uh, I'm assuming that will come with the surrender of the charter. But I will, um, I am planning to have a uh face-to-face meeting with the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, if she will have me, just to kind of figure out where where we stand and would, how, what, in what capacity they continue to need us, or if any. So I will get back with uh you, Jimmy, on that and Michael as well. Um, for the record retention, um, I don't know if Daphne, you would like to speak to that or Rhonda or?
President Fellows, currently, we will take advisement from the Department of Education and Arizona State Charter Board as to the process and protocol for the record retention.
Okay. I appreciate that, and you'll share that with the board when you get that um information. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, we will.
Um. Then uh, we wanna part E, identify the responsible party as Charter School Liaison for Retaining All Pertinent Uh Require- oh, sorry, that's part of the record retention, identify the responsible party. So we'll wait and identify a responsible party um at that point when we know what we have to provide. Um. Any other questions, concerns, comments with respect to this particular meeting content? Um. And I do have to uh thank everyone that was at the meeting on Tuesday. Um, I appreciate your support, and uh I think the board heard us. Um. The only thing that um I was disappointed wa- about was that when Mr. Scott spoke up and said that he was disappointed that we had not, they had not heard anything about our school um since twenty fourteen. And I know specifically that And I know specifically that there was something sent to the board in twenty twenty one. And I recognize that all of those board members weren't there in twenty twenty one. Um, but I would have hoped that Dan would have spoken up and said we've provided information to the board on a regular basis. Um, but perhaps he was not remembering at that point that we had provided information. So, um, I will, uh, let Mr. Scott know that we have been providing information from the school to, uh, the board on a regular basis. Perhaps not every year, but every two to three years. So anyway, that's enough from me. Any other comments, concerns, questions? And, um, I don't see anyone's hand up. I'm gonna open the, uh, Chula.
I just wanted to make sure we were going to the call to the audience.
Oh, yes, that's the next, uh, agenda item and it's number four, I'm five, six, seven, eight. Item number eight, uh, I'd like to open this up to the public if there's anyone present that would like to speak to the board. We will not be able to address your comments, but we would like to hear from you. Thank you. Okay, Alaska, I cannot pronounce your name and I apologize, but you're recognized.
And just a reminder, folks, we have two minutes, so I'm gonna start the timer in one second.
Thank you. Shouldn't, it shouldn't take a long time. Thanks, Chula, for the, for a notification. I was a little, we're nervous about that, so thank you. Um, I just wanted to clarify something, cause I have a little bit of a concern. I don't know if I should actually be concerned or not. But I know on Tuesday and also in the transition plan we were just shown, it mentions seven possible graduates. And I just want to make sure we're not locked into that number, like, we're not maxed out at seven. Because by my, like, I'm looking at the kids' transcripts every day and stuff, doing all this registration stuff for the schedule and everything. Um, I have like ten kids I am like certain are gonna graduate and then probably like five more who could push. Because first and foremost, Pima Vocational High School is a credit recovery school. And I don't want to limit them and their hard work and effort they're gonna be putting in these next two sessions, especially with the news that the school is going to close. So I just want to throw out there that I see potential for fifteen graduates. I'm, I'm sure they won't all put in all the work that is necessary, but I think a lot of them could and some people might surprise us. So I just wanted to throw out there that I see the potential for at least double that at graduation. And I didn't want us to be locked into seven just because we mentioned it in these meetings. That's all.
Can I respond to that, um, Chula? No?
No, we're not allowed to respond to comments.
I, it seems like something I could probably send an email about too. So if we wanted to chat about it, we could email. I just wanted to throw it out there today too, cause it's on my mind.
Thank you, Alaska. We appreciate you. Anyone else from the public?
Jessica wrote in the comments earlier, would Ms. Nancy be eligible for three oh one under the new guidelines? Just asking so she's not forgotten. Um, so we're not allowed to comment on that, but, uh, and incredibly since there's a parent trying to join. I don't have anybody in the waiting room, but if you wanna send me their email, I could invite them in.
And she speaks from mine? Will that mess up the transcript?
No, no, so long as she says her name, maybe.
All right, hold one.
But let me get my timer restarted one moment, please.
Okay, thank you.
Whenever you're ready, I'll press start.
Okay, um, my name's Lisa Gentry. Um, my son goes here and this is the first place that he's felt comfortable, that he feels accepted. Um, I'm not very pleased. I feel like we should have put up a more of a fight. I called the school district or the, the Board of Education this morning and I've voiced my, my concerns, my anger. And this is not right. I don't know why something else in Pima County is more important than our children's education. These kids, some of them are too old to go to the high schools. They're too old to go to the vocational high schools, but they still don't want a GED. They want a high school diploma. You cannot join the Marines with a GED. They will not take it. So if these children decide, I wanna go to the Marines, too bad, so sad. We're not taking you. So Pima County is basically throwing them out there like they're the dregs of the, the community. Why are they being treated that way? Why are our kids being tossed out like they're nothing? Because you want to, I don't know, build some new building downtown, build some new parking lot? That's not fair. These kids have a chance here. They have teachers that care. And we should be the ones standing up for them. I'm gonna advocate for them till the very end. I am not letting this go. This is not right at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gentry. We hear you. Any other public who wishes to speak?
That's Jessica with her hand up.
Oh, okay. Jessica.
Hello. Um, I just wanted to mention, and I'd mentioned this at our staff meeting, uh, yesterday. You know, I've been through a school closure, charter surrender with another, you know, entity. So I kinda know, you know, the procedures. Um, so a lot is gonna be gone over when the charter reps meet with ASBCS. So a lot of details as far as, you know, the record retention, you know, what, um, Ms. Anne was talking about, the finances. But also like you all as a school board, um, you know, what your role is gonna be and how long they're gonna need you to stay on for. So, you know, a lot of information's gonna get passed down when, uh, the charter reps meet with ASBCS. So just a heads up, that's a important meetings, important communication between the charter reps and ASBCS. That's all I wanted to mention in that, yeah, about Nancy.
Thank you, Jessica. You've been hurt. Uh, anyone else out there that needs to speak? Five, four, three, two, one, I think we're good to go. Um, next meeting will be Thursday, April eighteenth, unless I need to call a special meeting. So please set that time aside in your, um, calendar. And if you need to bail on it, just let me know as soon as you, uh, can. So thank you all for being here today. I appreciate it. And thank you to the staff. Thank you to CWD. And, um, we'll see you. Thank you, Anne. We'll see you next month. Take care, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.